All right, all meeting orders. Please stand to the left.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Somebody's not muted.
So we'll start with the overview of capital improvement project.
Good evening, Board of Education. This is Nick Humphrey, Vice President. Ask my screen. So tonight, we will do a quick overview of the campus project that is proposed. We are going to be doing pre-referendum number one. This is a copy letter that you can be at your leisure. Tonight, we're going to do six sections of the first summary. We'll also take the estimates, the detailed estimates, our numbers. The pre-referendum will quickly give an overview of the designs and steps of work. And lastly, we'll give a brief overview of the financial summary of how we've got this project structured. So the first order of business is the executive summary. I'll kind of give a brief overview of this. I know the Board of Education has this report in their hands. You can read some of the further detail at your leisure in the future. But basically, how this report is developed is into two separate propositions. The team, and when I say the team, that would be the district campus construction management, Young &amp; Right Architectural, and RG Tim's Financial Group, has worked very closely with all parties to develop this report as well as the scope of work. Proposition one that is being proposed is a total of $12,596,132, which would be a tax-neutral plan. Proposition one utilizes the district's current capital reserve of 3.3 million. And this is how it allows this proposition to be tax-neutral for the community. There is also, in this report, that we will go over a proposition number two that is proposed for a value of $3,283,989, which utilizes zero of the capital reserve funds because those funds are being allocated to Prop one. So with that, it creates a $13 increase per $100,000 home or a 0.73% annual additional tax increase. It's important to note that this tax increase would be in the year 2023, based on how the borrowing would take place, and we'll explain that further in Section six when we get to it. So to go briefly as the overview of what is in each proposition. At the Eden Elementary Building, there's the replacement of the exterior windows. There is some masonry restoration work. There would be some music room renovations, some classroom renovations, sidewalk and parking lot renovations. We'll get into a little bit of this here in the near future in the report. For the middle high school building, there would be some auditorium stage lighting replacements, some auditorium sound system and projector updates. Remove the building from COGEN and put the building on the electric grid. This was the only building that was not put on the grid from the last capital project. Replacement of the cafeteria air handling unit, some nurses' office renovations. For the bus garage, for the bus garage, there would be roofing replacement. And then in the COGEN building, there'd be installing a new overhead garage door. So that is a brief overview of the scope of work that would be in Proposition one. Proposition two includes some more work at Eden Elementary, which would be the replacement of the library lighting, some main office renovations, upgrades to the existing exterior building mounted lighting, replacement of the existing tennis court fencing, and new asphalt on the existing tennis courts. At GLP, it's proposed for upgrades to the existing exterior building mounted lighting, replacement of the interior doors with associated HVAC work. The middle high school would be some library renovations, upgrades to the existing exterior building mounted lighting, construction of six new tennis courts, which would allow converting the old tennis courts into additional parking lot space, some additional site fencing, and a new entrance at the existing sports complex. And lastly, at the bus garage building, there'd be some upgrades to the existing exterior building mounted lighting. So again, this report is broken into six sections. I've explained what the total value for each proposed proposition would be. We will, in Section six, give a brief overview of the financial analysis. So to jump right into it, for Proposition one, this is how the numbers have been derived. For the elementary school, for Proposition one, it'd be 6.6 million in round numbers. The high school would be about 2.6 million. The bus garage is about 288,000. The COGEN building would be 61,000, to make a grand total of the construction value of 9.5 million. And then in addition to that, there's a construction contingency for any unforeseen during the construction, an incidental budget, which applies to all the financial fees, inspections, testings, monitoring, et cetera. There'll be capitalized interest in DASNE, which we'll explain shortly. And that's how we derive to a $12,596,132 proposed Proposition one. Next is Proposition two. So in addition to Proposition one, if Prop two is voted on, would be an additional $577,000 to the elementary school, $156,000 at the GLP building, an additional $1.7 million at the high school, and $15,000 at the bus garage for a grand total of 2.5 million in construction dollars. You add the construction contingency, the incidental budget. In this particular model for Prop two, there would be no capitalized interest or DASNE financing fees, and it would be a grand total of Prop two for $3.2 million. So this is kind of a supposition explaining, and I won't go through this in detail, but there's been a lot of meetings with the district and the overall project team that are listed here, bulletized. You heard me talk about how there was percentages and what is below the construction values. So what is built into this report in the dollars is a design contingency of 7%. Inflation contingency, or another word, is escalation. As construction and everything proceeds throughout the years, cost of materials do increase. So we have a projection in the estimate to reflect when this project would actually be bid, as well as constructed. A construction contingency is 7%. Again, that is due to any unforeseen conditions during construction that would be come across. The incidental cost is 22%. That's how that number was derived on the summary page. And then lastly, a quick overview of kind of where we're at and where the proposed timeline moving forward would be. So we're actually presenting tonight to the board to give an overview of what's in the proposed capital project. The steps that have just started on Bullet number three, which is right here. This week, we have worked with the district's attorney to start the seeker process. I'll talk about that shortly. That would actually go from August to early October. After that would be your legal counsel, bond counsel, to prepare a resolution for early October. And then October, it says in this report, 21st, but I do believe you have an October 14th board meeting now that's got scheduled at the time of this report. The board meetings were still being scheduled, so this would actually be October 14th, that the board would have the option to approve the seeker, as well as approve a resolution to go out to the community for a public referendum vote in December of this year, 2020. So December 15th of 2020 is a proposed date for a community referendum vote. And with a successful vote after that, the documents would then go into design by Young &amp; Right Architectural. They'd be submitted to SED with a tentative date in 2021 and 22. It's important to note that this project will be broken up into two phases of construction. There's two main reasons for that. One is, and we'll discuss that as far as why the financials work better for the district with maximum cost allowances that are assigned to each building, so that's one reason. As well as a second reason, very similar to the last capital project, in order to make sure it's a true transition and making sure it's safe for the students and everything, we'd split the project over different summers. We would have a tentative bid date, again, with Phase one in January of 2022, and then Phase two would be January of 2023 to bid it, with construction starting in the spring of 202022, and everything being wrapped up by the fall of 2024. I won't go through this, but you can actually see in this section is how all the numbers are derived. This actually shows each line item of the work that I just explained, the unit costs in some regards to square footages, and how it's broken into the additional added percentages and how the values are actually arrived. So that's what all these pages are. Next is the pre-referendum schedule. We're actually down here. Tonight, we're a little bit ahead of schedule in the fact that tonight we're meeting on Row 19 to review the scope and the budget with the Board of Education. After this board meeting, it's important to note that the bond counsel, your legal counsel, Hodgson Russ, would actually start the seeker process. I do want to just kind of briefly mention that that is an option now, which would be recommended to proceed at least with the seeker process with the overall scope as it is. If the board does decide that they want to pull back some of the scope or change the dates of a vote, that is not a wasted time or energy to do the seeker process. There is a 30-day window that it has to be put out there to all the jurisdictional agencies. So that would have to happen, starting in August, to be completed by the board meeting in October 14th, which would be down here on Row 28, that the board would actually adopt the seeker language, as well as adopt a resolution for a community referendum. So if that was to take place on October 14th, that would all still align with a December 15th vote. And if you back up from there, there'd be some official public meetings, getting a mailer out to the residents to explain the capital project kind of in November, all leading up to a December 15th vote date. I will turn it now over to Mike McCarthy from Young &amp; Right Architectural, who will briefly go through some of that scope of work that I just discussed.
Okay, hello, everybody. So the document you're looking at now, this is a long-term plan, and this is a form that we've been working with with the district for probably about eight years now. So basically, items on the right are items that we discussed, we think, need to be done. And then on the left is items that could go into a potential project. So all the scope that Nick described a little bit ago, that is now on the left, as well with some estimates in there and some pricing. The items in the middle are things that are being worked on. So there's a Smart School Bond Act. There's a couple capital outlay projects, various maintenance projects that'll happen throughout the years within the budget. And another thing that's part of this too can be the building condition survey. And just a quick update on that, we did complete all of our field evaluations. So if you were in the schools, you probably saw us, you know, there's a team of us that go around and do all that good stuff. So now we're putting together behind-the-scenes things and some of the formal documents, so that we can begin to work with those in the future. Next page. Okay, so here's a picture of your existing elementary school. It's the front. And these are images that you have seen. Next are what the windows could look like. And again, we went back to some historic images in order to create these, just to match it as best we can. That is something we would have to do, is deal with historic preservation. Here's kind of the loading dock area, and that could be the potential. For the tennis courts at the high school, middle school complex, where the white parking lot is, that says 54 spaces on it. That and the first three tennis courts to its left are where they are now. What we're proposing is that we would shift all six tennis courts over to the left of the screen now, or to the west of the site, to keep them close to the school. And then that area that was tennis courts could become additional parking, which would be beneficial for football games, lacrosse, anything that you guys play up on the field. So it'd deal a lot more of that parking spaces as well. And it's 54 new ones, but it would lose some additional in that parking lot. So we'd probably end up with a bonus of about 46 from where we are now in the area.
So the next section, I'll turn it over to Jessica Bianchi from RG Tim's, who is the district's financial consultant. You may have to unmute yourself, Jessica. There you go. Yep.
Okay, perfect. All right, so this first slide here looks at Proposition one only, the $12,596,132. And what we're doing here is we're using 3.3 million from the capital reserve. And this is showing bonding the rest of the cost. And then when you go over all the way to the right-hand side, there's the net local share column. But if we go to the next slide, this is now looking at that same local share column from the other slide. So that's the column now in the middle, the $1,708,155. But now we're putting that together with the district's existing debt local share. So if you see in 2022, the current level of local share that you're paying is 410,000. And then in 2023, that drops down to 293,000. And that's when the debt for this project will come on in the 2023 year. So when we fill in the drop-off with this Proposition one project, we get to the same local share going forward. So it's kind of carrying that 410 going forward. So we would say that Proposition one has no additional tax impact, because it's just keeping you at the same level that you're paying now, the number that's in your tax cap and the current local share exclusion. We go to the next slide. This is looking at Prop one and two together. So again, we're still using that same 3.3 million from the capital reserve. And now when we go over to local share, it's gone up to 3.5 million. And if we go to the next slide, we're again looking at it with the existing debt. So it's that same level of local share, the 410,000, that dropped down to the 293. But now, when we're building in, Proposition one has no impact, but Proposition two will put you slightly over the local share that you have been paying. So that's that column over in the far right-hand side, the marginal increase. And that works out to be about 108,000 per year for 11 years. And on the 1920 tax levy, it was about a 0.73 increase. And that turns out to be a tax increase of about 13 cents, which is an impact of $13 per year on a $100,000 home. So that would be the impact for Prop two.
So that concludes our presentation. So we would certainly open it up to any questions that the board may have, and we'll go from there.
I have a question for Jessica. I've got a lot of feedback, but I'll continue. Regarding the current interest rate environment, where do you see current bond issuers getting very favorable rates? And it looks like that should be expected going forward.
Correct. So right now, interest rates are probably the best that I've seen. I've worked in the municipal bond industry for about 15 years, and these are the lowest rates that I've seen historically. We have used higher rates in this analysis just to give you some sort of protection against possible rising interest rates. And another option would be, if for some reason interest rates did go up, there's always the option of utilizing the dormitory authority. But we would only do that, obviously, if interest rates had away from us. But right now, you're right, there's a very positive interest rate environment for both bond anticipation notes and serial bonds.
So simply put, it's a cheap time, if we were going to do this, this is a cheap time to do it.
It is, yes. Like I said, it's the best interest rate market that I've seen in the last 15 years, so, yeah. And plus, you also have that drop-off coming up. And if you were to delay the project at all, you would, right now, the timing works out perfectly to fit this project in, where you have this drop, because basically you're paying off old debt to bring on new debt. And if you were to wait a year or so, you would miss that drop-off. So it would kind of be like, you're paying at a level, then you're going to drop down, and then you're going to spike back up. We try to prevent that from happening. So not only is it good timing as far as the bond market, but it's also good timing as far as your debt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So here's a question to the group. I know we talked about this back in April and June. How is the state seeing capital projects right now? Are they getting approved or denied at all?
Actually, from an SED approval standpoint, they're probably one of the quickest review times that we've seen. Projects are going into SED and coming out rather quickly. And Mike, I don't know if you have any other comments to that, but to answer the question, they are still getting approved at the SED level currently.
Yeah, I would agree with Nick. We haven't seen necessarily a change as of yet, whether or not one, you know, happens later on. As of right now, they are at a low, as far as review time is considered.
All right, I think that's all we got, guys, and Jessica.
Okay, well, thank you for allowing us the time tonight to present the proposed capital project. And we will talk soon in regards to next steps forward, and we will go from there.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Miles Kifner, who is initially certified in music, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the music tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1st, 2020, and ending on August 31st, 2024. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only. Salary is based upon ETA contract, bachelor's step one. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Okay.
Miles, congratulations. So an Eden grad is coming back. Actually, Miles did some student teaching underneath my wife at Frontier. So congratulations.
All right, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the tax levy for the 2020-2021 school year in the amount of $15,164,827 be approved, which establishes the tax rate per thousand as follows. Boston, $21.83. Concord, $47.30. Eden, $32.12. Evans, $22.11. North Collins, $23.98. Second.
Any discussion? So I've got a little discussion in regards to this. So we went out at a 1.76% tax increase. I'm sorry, 1.82. In doing that, we don't know where all the equalization rates are going to fall, where the tax levies fall. And we just get that as of the end of July, right? So we get it at the end of July. Our friends in Boston are actually going to get a tax decrease. Our taxpayers in Eden, instead of 1.82, are getting a 2.22% increase. And it goes back to, as we were talking about, through the budget process and the two votes we had, it's about growth and equalization rates. And this is where you're seeing this now come into play. So we told, we're going out at 1.82, and the Eden taxpayers are going to see a 2.2% increase. So if you get asked, that's why. The equalization rate changed dramatically for the town of Eden. Went from a 0.57 to a 0.53. So the farther you get away from one, the more tax effect you have. So our friends in Boston actually got a tax decrease, because they actually showed more true value growth in their town than Eden did as a whole. So, you know, we get blamed a lot for the taxes, but it's nothing we can do. We just basically take our tax levy and apply it to the formulas, and that's how it falls. So if you get asked in October why the taxes went up by more than 1.82, it's because of equalization and town growth. So some other towns got hit pretty hard. North Collins actually is is getting hit with almost a $112 increase, so.
Done?
I'm going to let Laura explain that one.
Okay. Equalization is where the state tries to take your assessed value and create a true value of what it would be on the market. And so you have a complex formula. It involves more than just the local municipality, it's communities around. And the State Office of Real Property Tax Service puts this out every July. Usually, we're waiting on it so that we can get things ready to get them over to the county for the tax bills. The thing I want to point out is when we rose taxes 1.82%, that was the total levy. So because taxes are going up more than 1.82% in Eden, doesn't mean we're collecting more than the total. Their piece of the pie is a little bigger because of the formula. It's taking that whole levy, once it's set by this Board of Education tonight, that's the amount of levy, and it gets divided out by many factors and computations to create a tax bill. It starts with looking at all the rates, equalizing them so that they're all at the true value, and then dividing out by town. And then that gets sent to Erie County, and then they take it and make the individual tax bills based on those computations, these tax rates. But it does not mean that if your tax rate went up more than 1.82, that the district got more than the dollar value that was approved in the budget. It could be when it's assessed as well, but yes. It says Boston had growth and was closer to their true value or their market rate.
So I took the spreadsheets that Laura sent out and just did a little comparison. So Boston grew their taxable value by 1.4 million. Boston only has 16 Boston only has 16% of our total levy. Eden, which has 72% of our total levy, only grew their taxable value by 1.2 million. So a much smaller percentage grew their value more than a larger value. So Boston's seeing a 3.37% tax decrease because of growth that they've showed in their properties. So it goes back to the taxes get voted on us, but yet we have no control over what the levy gets put into the formula.
How it gets divided up.
Right. So you'll see in that form that spreadsheet that Laura sent out, like Concord is way off of their equalization rate. They're 36%. They're probably due for an assessment. Eden's not far behind at 53%. But if you look at Boston, they're at 78%, so they're much closer to 100%. So their property values are a lot truer than, say, Eden or Concord's right now. So I'm going to pass it over to Marlene saying, if you got a problem with the taxes, the next meeting is when, Marlene? Next Wednesday? So we're just putting the levy into the formula, is all I'm saying in this discussion. Any other discussion? All right, let's vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education meeting be adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.